Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning, and welcome to the first meeting of the Environmental Scrutiny Committee. I am councillor Adrian Findlay, the chairman of the committee, and sitting to my right is Vice-Chairman councillor Raymond Whittaker. Before we begin, there is a standard announcement. If we have a fire alarm, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors, into the reception, and assemble in the car park at the front of the building and await further instructions. In addition to welcoming all new members to the committee's meeting, I would also like to welcome councillor Danny Brooks, Executive Councillor for the Environment, councillor James Bean, Executive Councillor for the Environment. Support councillor, sorry, do apologise. Other participants will be introduced when we reach their item or when they first speak. This meeting is being streamed via the county councillor's website, and all your comments will remain accessible online after the meeting. With this in mind, I would like to welcome members of the public and press who are watching. Just a couple of housekeeping announcements before we begin the agenda. Can I remind everyone to ensure their mobiles, laptops and iPads are now on silent? Requests to speak will be collated by the top table. If you wish to speak, can you please raise your hand and we will make a note? We will try to ensure that everyone can ask questions and make contributions. Therefore, I would appreciate contributions, are to the point, and also ask that you indicate early when you wish to speak. When you are invited to speak, please switch on your microphone and also please speak directly into the microphone so we can hear. When you have finished, please turn off your microphone, the hearing loop is now activated. Apologies for absent and replacement members. Jess, do we have any, please?
None received. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Item two, declarations of members' interests. Members of the committee are reminded that they only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on their declaration of current interests form. Do any members wish to declare any interests? No, thank you. Item three, minutes of the former Water Management Scrutiny Committee on the 18th of February 2025. This is to confirm as a correct record of the minutes of the former Floodwater Management Scrutiny Committee on the 18th of February 2025. The minutes are found on pages five to eight of the Agenda Pack. Councillor Baxter?
My comment is in relation to the minutes, but it's not about the accuracy of them. So I don't know if you want to check the accuracy first and then I'd like to ask a question after that, please.
That's fine, we will move the minutes first, councillor Baxter, and then we can come back to you. So can I ask for a proposal? Thank you. A seconder? Thank you. All those in favour? That's carried, thank you. Any against? Abstentions? Some abstentions. Yeah, I confirm those minutes have been approved. We can now refer back to councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. This will have been the last meeting of the Floodwater Management Scrutiny Committee. It was well rehearsed at full council about the reasons why that might be a contentious idea. It's done now. However, certainly in my area and across the county, flooding remains a massive issue. I can't see much on the work plan about how we're going to bring in people like the Environment Agency and Angling Water and hold them to account. This morning's agenda seems fairly light. It would have been an opportunity for Angling Water and Environment Agency and maybe even the Internal Drainage Boards to present and be held accountable. It was my only opportunity on behalf of the people that have been flooded, sometimes twice in my area, to hold those people to account. How are we now going to hold those people to account, please?
The programme that you may have in the Agenda Pack, I don't know if you've seen the latest one, in future meetings, that the floodwater management will be on every agenda on the revised. Yeah, I think I'll bring in Chris Miller, he may be able to clarify a little bit before you, councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning councillors. So Chris Miller, Head of Environment, so flood risk and water management falls under my remit. I actually have a prepared piece to read out as part of officers' announcements. So depending on the chairman's position, I could take that now and read that statement regarding how we're going to work the flood risk and water management work into the Environment Scrutiny Committee.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, Chris, that would be brilliant because that would clarify quite a lot for people to maybe prevent further questions. Thank you.
Beg pardon, and it's a written statement, so forgive me whilst I look at my screen. So you recognise that the decision has been made for the work of the Flood Risk and Water Management Committee to be absorbed into the Environment Scrutiny Committee. It is fully recognised that the importance of water management to Lincolnshire, and this cannot be underestimated both in relation to water supply and flood protection, given our topographical circumstances, with approximately one-third of land at or under sea level and with more frequent and more intense storms having devastating effects on residents, agriculture and businesses. With the work of the previous Flood Risk and Water Management Committee being absorbed into the work of the Environment Scrutiny Committee, we can ensure that the appropriate focus on the right issues at the right time is given and recognises that within the other businesses of the committee, there are many important links between the work streams. Programme updates from partner organisations such as the Environment Agency, Internal Drainage Board and Angling Water will still be received quarterly, and specific reports on strategic development work and major infrastructure proposals will be scheduled across the eight meetings per annum of this committee, as opposed to the four of the previous Flood Risk and Water Management Committee. An example of this will be at the next meeting with the item on the coastal adaptation strategy work of the Lincolnshire Coast 2100+ Programme. The change will also ensure that we minimise duplication, given the political endorsement of programmes and expenditure for this council often meant that reports had to be submitted twice, once for each of the two committees previously. In each of the eight meetings, there will be an update on the ongoing work of the Flood Risk and Water Management Team in LCC, such as on property flood resilience, section 19 updates and the flood alleviation capital programme.
Does that satisfy you, councillor Baxter?
I think I understand what I'm being told. It will come up again under the work plan, so I'll happily talk to it then. Thank you.
Lovely, thank you. Councillor Carrington?
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. I'm sure we'll all want to come back under the work programme. I thank Chris for his comments. I'll save my comments on what he said until we get to the work programme. But specifically, excuse me, Chairman, specifically regarding the minutes, you will have noticed, as will colleagues, that as part of those minutes, there was reference to the Storms Impact Report, which was prepared by the Flood and Water Management Committee plus one. I was that plus one because I was the chairman of Environment and Economy under the previous council. Can I seek from you, Chairman, an absolute assurance that all the recommendations of the Flood and Water Management Storm Impact Group will be implemented? I put this question to councillor Matthews in the first meeting of this council on the 23rd of May, and I did not get a particularly fulsome answer, and I appreciate that he may not have read that document at that time. But we're now two months in, so the flood and water management, which we are told will continue within this committee, made some extremely important recommendations. They are urgent recommendations which require action. May I have your assurance as chairman that they will in full be implemented?
Well, I can assure you, councillor Carrington, that anything of any importance and pretty much everything on the programme of the Agenda Programme is of importance, so I'm sure it will be dealt with as best we can as soon as we can on each and every item. Does that satisfy you, councillor Carrington?
I'm afraid, Chairman, it does not, but we'll return to it later perhaps. What I was seeking was a specific answer, and I'm afraid I have not got one. If you can't give one, perhaps the portfolio holder could. But these are important matters which have caused very great concern across our county. And what I'm getting initially from councillor Matthews and now from yourself is not an answer.
Chris?
Thank you, Chairman. Hopefully I can allay some of councillor Carrington's concerns. The work of the Storm Impact Working Group and the recommendations made were signed off by the previous portfolio holder, and many of the recommendations have already been completed. The intention was to bring that back to the next scrutiny committee under the Flood Risk and Water Management Team update so we can go through the recommendations that have been worked through and where we are with the ones that are remaining following the election.
Thank you for the indulgence, Chairman. I'm afraid again, that is really not satisfactory. I appreciate the point that Chris has made from the point of view of an officer. What I am seeking, and I think it's perfectly reasonable to seek, is an assurance from those who are elected to govern this council that all of those recommendations will be implemented. And on that, so far, there has been silence. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Brooks?
Thank you, Chairman. The points have all been noted. As Chris has said, a vast majority have already been implemented. And the ones that we are looking at now, we will be looking at them, and I will give you a written reply as soon as possible.
Again, Chairman, that is not really going to satisfy the people of Lincolnshire. They thought they had a set of recommendations which had been accepted in full, and it seems various people in the political domain rather than the officer domain are bending over backwards not to give a simple assurance, which is all we ask for, that all of those recommendations signed off by the previous council will be implemented. We're now two months in, and I'm afraid there are no excuses for this delay, which is causing uncertainty and great distress amongst people who have suffered repeatedly from flooding.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Chair. I was trying to work out a good point of proceedings to mention this, so I think now is a good opportunity. The structure of this committee now has removed a lot of district council involvement, so these guys are not invited to our meetings anymore. One thing that struck me is, from a representation viewpoint, every district here is represented by two members. In fact, Lincoln is one, but Boston has none. So there's no representation from a district to Boston here at all. So may I suggest that when we have flood-relevant agendas, that we do invite the district councillors who were here previously to come and join us so they can actually give us local input? Because at the moment, Boston, which as we know had major flooding in January, dozens of homes flooded etc., has no representation.
Thank you. Chris Miller?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so the process that we're looking at for the district councils is for when there is a piece specific to their area. So for example, at the next meeting, when we bring the coastal adaptation for Lincolnshire 2100+ for the coast, we will invite the East Lindsay District Councillor, who would have represented on flood and water scrutiny, to be present in the chamber. So hopefully then, you know, those district councils will be present. When we have updates, they will be circulated to the district so that they will be able to ask questions. And obviously districts are perfectly entitled to scrutinise the other risk management agencies in their own right anyway, without being at this committee.
Thank you. Announcements and updates. Item four, this is a standard item on all scrutiny committees' agenda enabling announcements to be made. As chairman, I have no announcements. Can I ask the executive councillor, councillor Danny Brooks, if he has any announcements?
No announcements, Chair.
Thank you. Yeah. Councillor Baxter?
Thank you. Sometimes we would be able to ask questions of the executive after they've made their announcements, and I've got a couple, but one I think is probably to you about the weight of this morning's agenda. There's a few things that I'm surprised are not on it, but one of them is about the service reporting, a quarterly report on flooding and waste that used to be reported to the Environment and Economy along with one of the growth agenda items. I noticed that it's, in March, the equivalent committee discussed quarter three reports on flooding and waste management from last year, and in September, or possibly November, we've got on our work programme to look at quarter one of this year. So why aren't we talking about quarter four of last year in the annual outturn at this meeting? And if we're not, then how do I get those figures? Because I'm very interested in the performance of the county council on flooding and it's a kind of counting how many regulation 18... 19, I beg your pardon. Regulation 19 inquiries were commissioned and how many were dealt with. I've still got residents in Tallington that are waiting for the final, final version of the Regulation 19 into the floods in Tallington the year before last. So I'm very interested in Regulation 19 inquiries, but also I'm interested in the performance of recycling because it's something that everybody does. Every household in Lincolnshire is interested in recycling at least once a week. So why aren't we able to scrutinise those figures here? Thank you.
Councillor Chris, sorry, Chris Miller?
Promotional ready. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the questions on that, councillor Baxter, because obviously certainly from the section 19 perspective, that sits under the Flood Risk and Water Management Group. It will actually form part of the service discussions after the formal meeting. We'll be going through that when the four of us provide information about the work that we do within the council. However, I can preempt that if you like. The 254 section 19s post-storm Babet, all but 13 are now complete, and the other 11 should be done by the end of this week or next week, leaving just two outstanding section 19s across the county.
Yes, councillor Baxter?
Thank you. So the discussions or the presentations after the formal meeting, are they going to be open to the public? Because we used to have a public presentation of the figures for flooding and waste management. Is that no longer the case? Are we...
The four presentations are in the informal session, which will not be recorded.
So how can I publicly interrogate and how can I publicly ask questions about the performance of this council if the figures are going to be discussed in private?
Absolutely, to answer that, councillor Baxter, I suppose I could liaise with Chris to try and answer that. But I don't really know how to answer you today on how it's going to be publicly challenged, whether it would come under a future item agenda or...
So perhaps you could answer why it isn't on this agenda? Was it not presented to you as a potential item on this agenda?
No, the agenda that's presented is, the agenda programme that's presented is for approval by us today. We are given the option to add to that agenda and add comments to it. So I take on board what you're saying today, but there's no reason why we couldn't add those comments to future agendas. Could I just, Simon Evans, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to make the committee aware that this is an introductory programme of committee meetings that all committees have been going through during the last few weeks. And several committees have been limiting, if you like, the public session. So there is an opportunity for all newly elected members to become acquainted with the service areas. So at the conclusion of this meeting, which is a public meeting, as has been acknowledged, there will be a closed session, and that will provide an opportunity for new members of the committee and existing members to acquaint themselves with the topics under the remit of the committee. The, if there is no, I mean, the short answer to the question from councillor Baxter, Chairman, is that there is no opportunity at this meeting, but there may be opportunities to look back at the figures for quarter four at one of the future meetings when it could be listed as part of the updates. So for example, there will be a written update at the next meeting on flood risk management, which will presumably include all of those figures. So I think the, whilst, you know, the agenda has been out there for a week now, and we are at the meeting, and now we're learning concerns about the content of the agenda. And I just feel that perhaps, you know, we might want to, the agenda's been published for a week, and whilst we can perhaps register the concerns that certain councillors are saying, I think we are still on the announcements for this item, which aren't generally a discussion. And maybe it might be best if they could be parked until the work programme discussion later on so that we could actually move into the main agenda items. It's just a suggestion, Chairman. But the agenda is, it has been published, it's been there. It is following a pattern that all scrutiny committees have been following over the first cycle of meetings, where they are going for a light agenda, generally light agenda, only the items that are really necessary with an opportunity for all members of the committee. So this has been right across the board at all committee meetings. So there's no difference to any of the others that have been operating. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks, Simon.
Chair, I would like to come back on this.
Yeah, councillor Baxter?
Thank you. I think we're all in a bit of an awkward position. I'm not going to criticise officers in a public meeting, but I wouldn't have thought it was the policy or the intention of the new administration to limit public debate and to limit the agendas. And what we're being told is that we're getting in an agenda light because of new councillors. Well, we're not all new councillors, and the best way to learn how the committee system works is to go through the committee as it works. That's how I learn. I didn't get any kind of, you're new, you get a special treatment. I sat through and I listened to the experienced councillors interrogating the agenda items that were put before me. So I wouldn't want anyone to feel patronised by the situation. But what I still don't understand, and I realise that you're, I would imagine you're taking advice from officers, I don't understand why a standard agenda item, which is not exactly complicated, it's just reporting information that is regularly reported to the committee, why you would have been advised or why you would have chosen not to have that on the committee? Because it's a standard report and to suddenly say, oh crumbs, quarter four, we forgot all about that. It just sounds to me strange. So a solution would be to have the informal discussions after the meeting in public rather than in private because generally speaking, unless there's sensitive or commercially sensitive information, everything should be in the open, shouldn't it? Everything should be transparent. And if it's a kind of learning session for councillors, why not make it a learning session for the members of the public as well? I don't think that any of us are as, we're all capable of getting through this agenda item and understanding what is put in front of us. Reports are generally well-written, there's a lot of words in them, but they're easy to understand. So I'm massively disappointed. I'm not blaming you.
Yeah, councillor Danny Brooks?
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, it was an officer decision to not bring that on because of the new councillors, but I would like to see it certainly on the agenda. I didn't have a side of the agenda until last week when it came out, and I think it should be on the agenda at the next meeting. We are transparent, it's not a political decision, and we want everything out in the open.
Simon?
I hesitate to prolong the discussion, but in 2021, in the previous council term, the first meeting of the Flood and Water Management, the former Flood and Water Management Scrutiny Committee, was an informal session in its entirety. The first formal meeting of that committee took place on the 21st of September 2021. So that was, if the elections were in May, that's around four months after the opening of the committee. So this time round, there is more because there is a public meeting in, on the 27th of June. There's a further public meeting on the 1st of August. So I'll stop there, Chairman. Thank you.
Thanks, Simon. Councillor Carrington?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I had indicated that I wished to speak. Really, two points. The second one is maybe a point of order, but I'll put it to you anyway. But the first one, can I just endorse my extreme concern? There's a clue in the name of this committee which is scrutiny. And I've listened carefully to officers, but I'm utterly unconvinced by the arguments which have been put. And I have to say that the other committee on which I serve, the Audit Committee, also had a training session bolted on to it and will to its next one, and that's fine. But it had a full agenda with some very challenging items on it, which the committee, including a majority of members who of course were new and inexperienced, managed to deal with very well. This is not scrutiny if we are not scrutinising everything we could. But the point that I wish to put to you, really related to item four announcements by the chairman, executive councillor and lead officers. Historically, we have always had, and I'm referring now back to the Environment and Economy Committee, which I chaired for three years, we always had a question session, as councillor Baxter alluded to, with the executive councillor. Can I ask, where we have circumstances where the executive councillor chooses not to make an announcement, that's absolutely fine. Is it then in order for us to put and the executive councillor to take questions from members?
Yeah, I don't see any, I don't see any problem with that. If the executive council is willing to accept questions, then I don't see a problem with that at all, councillor Carrington.
Great. Can I put a question, Chairman?
Absolutely.
Fantastic. I thought that would be the answer. I'm relieved to hear it. Councillor Brooks, I want to pick up on one particular aspect of the recommendations of Flood and Water Management Storm Impact Group, which have actually been in the news over the last few days and the last week. And that concerns, excuse me, a pump on the Boston Barrier, which is known as the Black Sloughs Pump, but it's actually operated by the Environment Agency. The Environment Agency closed down that pump in circumstances that some of us find frankly controversial some time ago, and it may have played a significant role in the recent flooding events in Boston. And really, I think all parties, certainly in the old council, were of the view that it should be restored. May I ask what action you will be able to take as executive board member of the Lead Local Flood Authority to try and get this pump brought back, not so much into use, but on standby so that if we have an event like we had in January, we have the mechanism to move the water in the way that we used to back in the day. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Carrington. The Black Sloughs, I personally agree, I think it should have been brought back into action long ago. And I do know that the Environment Agency are reviewing that now. We've pushed them to review it, and they will come back with the decision at a later date, I assume. But we've pushed to get that reviewed and to see what they come back. You will know that we can't force the Environment Agency to do anything, but we are pushing for that.
Thank you, councillor Brooks. Councillor Baxter?
Thank you. Another question to the executive member, and that's about, I realise you've just arrived, the review of the Minerals and Waste Local Plan. The county's Minerals and Waste Local Plan went through a regulation, I get regulations and sections muddled up, but went through a Regulation 18 consultation last year. So last autumn, people were very excited about it in September, and prior to that, an executive meeting and a scrutiny meeting, and actually at the scrutiny panel. I notice it's not on this scrutiny work plan until next January, but every time I go to West Deipping particularly, but also Baston, they say, what's going on with the Minerals and Waste Local Plan? I understand from speaking to officers that it's been kicked into the short grass, long grass, half-cut grass...
grass, half-cut grass. I understand that it's not going to appear again until middle of next year. Do you, can you shed any light, please?
I can't shed any light on it, but I would like to know myself, so I shall find out all the details and give you a written reply on that. Thank you.
Yeah, Neil McBride.
Thank you, chairman. Good morning, councillors. I can give a response to that. So as you say, the consultation concluded last September, and we did receive the most number of representations that we've received for any local plan consultation. And the process at the moment is that those representations are being reviewed, and the, the process requires that we provide a consultation statement to explain how we've dealt with those responses. And also, we're looking at reviewing the local plan in terms of the policies and potentially some site allocations. And that does take time, because we have to go through various sort of assessments to ensure that all the evidence is there to support whatever conclusions that we will be putting forward to the various committees. So the programme is that the report or the local plan, the pre-submission local plan will be brought to this committee in January, it will then go to executive in February, and then for council, with the intention of starting the regulation nineteen consultation in March, April next year. So that's the current programme that we're, that we're working to.
Thank you, Neil. So we're done. No more councillors, questions for councillor Brooks? No, thank you. Right. Item five. Procurement of landscape visual assessment advice for the national significant infrastructure products. Item five is what we refer to as a pre-decision scrutiny item. This is where the scrutiny, scrutiny committee consider a proposal, which is due to be considered by the executive or an executive councillor. Today's item is a, is a proposed decision by the councillor, executive councillor for environment councillor Danny Brooks. The report is found on pages nine to seventeen of the agenda pack. After we have heard all the information, we as a committee are asked to decide whether we support the recommendations and whether we wish to record any additional comments for the councillor to consider. This, this will be presented by Neil McBride, who is the head of planning. After Neil has presented the item, we will then move to questions. And off the floor to Neil, please.
Thank you, chairman. So I'm hoping that the report that's before the committee this morning is fairly self-explanatory as to why it is necessary for a contract to be awarded. And hopefully that you'll see that the report sets out that the costs that are incurred by the council in terms of this contract will be largely, be able to be recovered from what's called planning performance agreements, which is what we have in place with the, with developers for these projects, so that the overall cost of this contract on the council would be minimal. Just want to take a couple of minutes just to sort of set out some of the, I think, the advantages of why having a landscape consultant on board for the council can make a difference. So I'm sure councillors will be well aware of the programme of nationally significant infrastructure projects that are currently being brought forward across the county, whether that's for solar farms, offshore wind and the associated onshore infrastructure, overhead lines, pylons and substations. So you'll no doubt be aware that there is quite a large amount of development that's proposed in the county at the moment. The difference, I think that having a landscape consultant on board, what that does allow us is to challenge the developers, to make sure that the information that they put forward in relation to landscape-related matters is robust and credible. So the first wave of solar projects that came through the process a couple of years ago, we were finding that the developers were perhaps not being as sort of rigorous as what they could be in terms of their landscape and visual impact assessments. And for one or two of the first solar farms that were submitted, the conclusions of those reports on landscape and visual impact was that solar farms would have a positive impact on the landscape of Lincolnshire. Naturally, having a landscape consultant that we were able to get advice from, we were able to challenge those sort of assertions that were made by the developers and kick back. And through the examination process, they were sort of prepared to concede that some of their original assessments were perhaps a little bit sort of favourable in terms of what the developer was wanting the examining authority to hear. So what we're seeing now is the new sort of second or third wave of these projects that are coming forward. The landscape and visual impact assessments that are being prepared for these developments are being more realistic in terms of the conclusions that they are making, and they do now acknowledge that these sort of developments will have some sort of impact on the landscape. So I think that is an important sort of benefit of having a landscape consultant on board. These sort of second and third wave of projects haven't yet been examined or are being examined at the moment, but decisions haven't been made by the secretary of state on, on them yet, so it'll be interesting to see how the secretary of state takes into account sort of conclusions that the, these impacts on the landscape are actually in fact detrimental, which is what we've been saying from sort of day one, that say the first round of developers weren't prepared to accept that. So I hope that that gives some sort of context to why the contract is required. And finally, I'll just conclude by drawing your, your attention to the Grimsby to Warpole overhead lines and pylons project, which is currently at a statutory consultation. That statutory consultation involves, as part of the evidence, over 200 viewpoints along the route. And again, it's important that the council has the ability to check those viewpoints, to make sure that those viewpoints are taken in the right place, and there isn't better ones where that could have been used, which would ensure that when the application is brought forward, the full assessment of the proposal is available for the examining authority. It's not sort of compromised because they haven't included the correct viewpoint. So again, I think that just sort of underlines the value of having a landscape consultant on board can help the council in terms of its responses to these nationally significant infrastructure projects. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you for that, Neil. Right, we should now take questions. We should now take questions from councillor Reeve.
Thank you, chairman. I've got a quick question about, you said that the costs of these landscaping consultants would be largely recovered. Can you just enlighten us to where that will be recovered from? Is that from the national taxpayer, from the developer themselves? And do we have a range of consultants that we can choose from? Or are we going to be tied to one expensive contract and not be able to tender to a wide range of potential suppliers for this contract? Thank you.
So in terms of where the money comes from, the developer pays for the advice, so through the planning performance agreements that we set up with the developers, then it comes from their sort of, from their accounts, so it's not from the, from the taxpayer. The, I think the, the benefit of having a single consultant on board is that they can get to know the, the county well, they can understand the issues that are being sort of experienced in Lincolnshire, and to have that sort of background knowledge, I think is, is helpful, rather than potentially having a range of different consultants who won't be able to sort of develop that experience and that knowledge. In terms of the cost, so far, we haven't had any difficulty in retrieving the money for the landscape consultants that we've already been paying for through our current arrangements from the developers. So the, the cost of this isn't of any great significance to the council, because the developers pay for, for the money back for what we, what we use on the landscape consultant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wimhurst.
Thank you, Chair. It's a question in regard to the point one, point two in the background on page thirteen. I was just wondering whether you could give a recent example of what about nationally significant infrastructure projects? The report refers to a significant number of existing and emerging applications, but it's no, it's not in any way specific as to what and where these are, please. Thank you.
Yeah, certainly. So as it stands at the moment, there are 25 nationally significant infrastructure projects across Lincolnshire at various stages of the process. So we've had a number of applications that have now been consented, so there's probably five or six that have already got consents, but there's still the next stage of the processes that, as part of the consenting process, they'll also have requirements which are similar to planning conditions, which they have to be, which have to be assessed. So again, we need some support in terms of the landscape and visual impact elements of those requirements that will be assessed. There are probably at the moment two schemes that are at examination, so they're going through the process at the moment. And then the remainder are at various sort of stages of pre-application. So the nationally significant infrastructure project regime takes a number of years from when an application is first submitted until a decision is made, and then ultimately the developer, if it gets consent, goes out and starts work. So typically, these can take five or six years from the day the sort of the application or the, the day the developer comes to talk to us in terms of pre-application. That can take probably maybe one to two years, and then the examination and recommendation process can take another 12 months, and then the discharge of requirements again can take another 12 months. So you can see that there is quite a, a long time span for these projects. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Carrington.
Thank you very much indeed, chairman, and thanks to Mr McBride and the team for an excellent report. And a huge amount of diplomacy in the presentation that Mr McBride just gave. I was particularly tickled by, by, by his phrase that developers were sometimes not as rigorous as they could be in addressing landscape. Let me be blunt, I've read a lot of these applications, and many of them are absolutely appalling and dismissive in the way they treat landscape. And we have some absolutely wonderful and enormously valuable landscape here in Lincolnshire, and it deserves proper protection. The sheer volume of, of cases, 25 NSIPS alone, and don't forget, below the NSIP level, there are some smaller, be they solar parks, be they battery storage facilities, which should be decided locally, but still have to be commented on by Lincolnshire County Council. There's a huge volume of very specialised work here, and that requires a great deal of time and some great skills. Of course, we have great skills within the department here at the county, but it's small and targeted elsewhere. So I completely support getting this in. I have to say, it is a depressing truth that this kind of conversation is being had in local planning authorities and unitaries like Lincolnshire, up and down the country, up and down the country. There is an enormous amount of money, whether it's recovered or not, having to be spent on this. And the reason it's being spent here in Lincolnshire is that we are being dumped on, we are under siege from these enormous proposals. Now, you can say that a new reservoir is much needed, but whether we need more than a dozen gigantic solar parks, whether we need, and officers have just referred to it, chains of pylons, that's a very, very different matter. And there'll be wind turbines coming around the corner, they've been on the back burner for a few years, they've been brought back. So I strongly support this. The only caution I'd put, I wonder whether Mr McBride might like to comment on it, is that in the end, all of these NSIPS are decided by the secretary of state. It is absolutely right that we put the most powerful positive possible arguments for or against, often against, often seeking improvements to schemes which could be made less damaging. Very important that we put those, but still it is the secretary of state who makes the decision. And I'm mindful of, I don't know, Neil, whether you've come across it, a recent decision in the Vale of Glamorgan, that was by a planning inspector. In a highly valuable landscape, I can't remember whether it was nationally significant, but certainly locally significant landscape, where the planning inspectorate, really following the government's political line, said, yes, it is an enormously valuable rural landscape, but actually, the need for renewable energy, this was a solar park, trumps that. And that, to me, isn't a sign of defeat, it just means we have to be even sharper in putting the right arguments to central governments. I strongly support what's on the agenda today. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Carrington. Councillor Snies.
Thank you, chairman. I can only echo councillor Carrington's passion for our Lincolnshire landscape. But for clarity, do the NSIPS have to follow our recommendations, and can they be conditions through planning that they must implement our designs? And then do the developers only pay us back for our designs once the planning permission has been granted? Thank you.
I'll take your final question first. So in terms of paying, no, not after the decision's granted. So what we do is we have three different stages in terms of these planning forms agreements. So we have the first stage at pre-application, so we will agree with the developer a contribution that they will need to pay, not only for the landscape advice, but for all the other work that we do on, on the project. So that will be paid at the end of the pre-application stage, so before the application is submitted. We have a second stage in terms of another agreement which takes us through the examination, and then at the end of the examination, again, we then invoice and get payment at the end of the examination. And then thirdly, if the consent is granted, then we enter into a third sort of stage, and we recover our costs that we will basically incur during the assessment of the requirements and conditions that are attached to any consent. So it's not a case of if they don't get consent, they don't pay, because each of the stages of the development, we will make sure that we, we can recover at that particular stage. So that's not an issue. And then in terms of, sorry, your question was about the influence of the...
Yes, once we've, if we've been a consultant for the design, does the applicant have to then follow our recommendations and our design, and will that be a condition on the actual report? Or can they go ahead and use their own landscaper, or, you know, argue against it and do something other than what we have requested them to do?
So in terms of how these applications are assessed, rather than going to, you know, normally the planning committee, which, you know, probably is what you would normally expect for an application, these applications are assessed by an examining, examining authority over a period of six months. And during that period of six months, as an authority, we have an opportunity to put in, say, we're actually, well, normally that we disagree with the project from day one, but then if it is going to be consented, then these concessions or these changes should be made to make the development as acceptable as it can be for, you know, for the communities. It's our, I suppose, our role to persuade the examining authority to take on board our sort of changes that we're suggesting, rather than, I mean, sometimes the developer will agree and, you know, happy to, to, to sort of go along with that if they think that's going to help them to get consent. Other times, they, they may kick back and resist. But I can give you one example of where recently we had the, a solar farm at West Burton. It's not at West Burton, it's in Lincolnshire, but the actual, the, the name of the project was West Burton. And through the examination, both ourselves and historic England were very concerned that one of the areas of the land where the solar panels were going to be constructed would be negative on an historic asset. And the examining authority recommended to the secretary of state that that part of the development was taken out of the, of the, you know, of the scheme, and the secretary of state agreed. So there is, there is, you know, worthwhile in terms of pursuing this, because you can make changes, and some of those changes can obviously make a difference, because rather than having three areas of solar farm for that particular project, we don't now need two. So it's a, it's a small win, but it will be a win for that community which were going to be adjacent to that particular part of the solar project.
Wonderful. Sorry, Mr Chairman, just come back on that. So it is enforceable, but the secretary of state will look favourable along any suggestion that we make with our recommendation if we have this. So thank you very much for clarity on that. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, chairman. I attended the Grimsby to Warpole statutory consultation for county councillors online, and during the Q and A session... and during the Q and A session, I asked would this be it? As this was to support energy for 2050, what about beyond? Will this need to be extended upon to keep up for beyond 2050? The question was left unanswered. So my question is, will the assessment consider the landscape and visual impact on the area for any future additions to this infrastructure? What's to say they build another route of pylons right next door? Once this, once these NSIPs are built, the President is there for more. Will this be taken account in, taken into account in the assessment? Thank you.
So in terms of the assessment for that project, they can only take account of what's known at the moment. So, you know, if there are going to be sort of further pylons and overhead lines in the future, beyond 2050, then that project would then be subject to another round of consultations and assessments and at that time they would then, depending on whether this project is granted consent and built out or not, then if it is, then they'll obviously have to take into account what's there at that time and if not, then again they would, you know, starting from a landscape which is, you know, as it is at the moment. So these projects will only be dealt, dealing with what's before the examination now, not what might be coming in the future, because obviously that's unknown and you can't take that into account.
But it is a, but it is a possibility. So I think it is something that the assessment should consider if there is, you know, going to be another, you know, as they've said, it's to support till 2050. You know, what's to say that there's going to be more beyond that infrastructure? So I think it is important to highlight in the assessment, you know, we haven't got a clear beyond that, beyond the 2050, is to have this in the assessment to say this is what potentially could also be added beyond that.
Yeah, I'd say that, I mean, one of the things that we do look at because of the number of projects that are in Lincolnshire at the moment are the cumulative impacts. So for that particular project, there are a number of substations that are proposed and at those substations which National Grid are proposing, there'll also be other substations which are potentially coming forward from developers who are going to connect into the Grimsby to Walpole project. So where those information is known about those projects, then we can and we do take into account that cumulative impact, but we can only assess what's currently known. So we can't assess something that isn't known at this time. So where we do have that information, those impacts will be assessed, but where we don't know what's going to come in the future, it's then difficult to require the developer to assess the unknown to some extent.
Thank you. councillor Wood.
Thank you Chair. I think Neil, you already answered this question, but I'll just come back to it, just for clarity and understanding. It was just a question of whether the developers ever challenged the cost put forward by the council or the consultant, or is that, I'm guessing that's all sorted out in the first stage of the agreement phase, so they can't come back against the cost puts forward?
Yeah, so once the planned performance is agreement, so being agreed and it's then sort of included into a legal document, then unless we come back at a later stage and actually say, well actually it's going to cost us more than what we originally anticipated, there is a mechanism to deal with that as well, but then that has to be under the agreement of the developer. But what we agree from day one, they are then, they are then obliged to pay and we haven't had any developers that have not paid what was agreed from day one.
Thank you. councillor Martin.
Thank you Chairman. Is the three percent cost, which is current, the fee which is currently paid to the middleman, i.e. consultancy plus, is that recoverable? And obviously if you're expecting to take out the entire seven hundred and fifty K of the contract, does that mean that this contract essentially is an expected cost of twenty two thousand pounds to the council? Also, is there a, just one second, is there a cost quality consideration of this, where the consultants we take on will get a better quality consultant depending on how much we pay? And therefore is there some kind of information that you can get during these contracts of the specialist skills for consultants and their success rates and such like, because obviously being what these are, we need to have successful outcomes for people in Lincolnshire for the money we're paying? Thank you.
Yeah, I mean in terms of the amount that we can recover through sort of PPAs, it is very wide ranging, so we can basically suggest anything that the council incurs to basically enable us to provide the advice. So we could look at putting any sort of additional procurement costs into the fees that we charge of the developers. So there is that option for us to do that, because we can cover any cost at all to the council in terms of dealing with these projects. I mean in terms of quality, I suppose that's a sort of quite a difficult question to answer. I mean I would say that because of the number of projects coming forward in Lincolnshire, the market that we can go to is very compromised because a lot of the developers are using their own landscape consultants. Obviously we can't use them because that would be a conflict of interest. So, but I mean the landscape consultant that we've worked with for the last three years who's provided our, you know, provided responses to the project so far, I mean we've had no issue with the quality of the information they've provided. That information has been included in our local impact reports, which has been brought to the Planning and Regulation Committee, so there's a landscape appendancy that the committee can see in terms of the work that that consultant does and how they've sort of been involved in the examinations in terms of answering questions from the developer or the examining authority. Again, we haven't had any concern at all as to the quality that they've sort of shown to date.
Thank you. councillor Whitaker.
Thank you Chairman. Neil, in your report, you said there were three alternatives. We did nothing, we recruit somebody to a permanent position, or we use a contractor. I quite agree with you that awarding it to a contractor is the right thing to do. Now, one of the nationally significant infrastructure projects which is coming up, which will require landscape and visual impact advice, is going to be the reservoir at Spredington, just below Sleaford. Having been to a meeting with Anglia Water the other night, we're talking about an area of one point nine square miles and a dam wall twenty metres high, which is quite a significant piece of structure in the flat landscape of Lincolnshire. The council intend to utilise the Yorkshire Purchasing Organisation to procure this specialist. Do you think that this company Yorkshire Purchasing have actually got the right type of specialist that could handle visual impact, seeing as only three reservoirs have been built in this country in the last ten years?
So I think the first thing I'd say that to give you some sort of reassurance, that we've already, our current landscape consultant is already involved in that project and providing advice in relation to the sort of pre-application stages. So we are sort of getting advice at this stage in terms of that's being passed to the developer in terms of the visual impacts of that project. So in terms of the procurement process, so as I understand it, the Yorkshire act almost as a broker, so they will be sort of on their framework, a list of landscape consultants who can undertake this work and then they'll be invited to bid in and then it will be for us with our procurement colleagues to decide which one of those sort of tenders is the most appropriate for the work that we want them to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Baxter.
Thank you Chair. I'm going to go back right to councillor Reeves' question about the, how sensible it is to have one person or one consultancy. Hopefully it's not one person, that would be a very busy but very rich guy or girl. The annual contract value is seven hundred and fifty thousand pounds, is that per year or over the three years?
I would say from the work we've done so far, that would cover the three years rather than for one year. So we've put in a sort of an estimate as to what we think the contract will be worth. Obviously we're only going to pay for the work that's done, so we're not going to commit to pay the contract for work that isn't undertaken, so it'll be only for the work that's actually done. So on a precautionary process, we have put in a high figure, but that would be for the three years rather than for one year.
Okay. Thanks. So it's roughly quarter of a million pounds a year. You said, we're going to the YPO framework for spatial planning or some such, how many suppliers are on that framework?
And that's a question that the procurement team would be able to, would need to answer. I don't know how many, how many particular specialists are registered on that. I mean that might change almost on a daily basis. I don't know if, you know, new consultants can be added to that framework and what the process is for that, so, but yeah, that's the framework that the procurement team have advised that we should use.
Is anyone from the procurement team here?
No.
Okay, so we're looking at a report on procurement and we're looking to recommend that we use a YPO framework, but we don't know how many suppliers are on the framework. It could be fifty, it could be one. It's unlikely to change at a moment's notice, it's quite difficult to get on these frameworks and generally what, once you're on, you're on. So that's a concern, especially when we looked at, we were in here yesterday talking about our Treasury advice and there are only two in the market and the one that we use, MUFG, deal with almost every authority in the East Midlands. So it's a, they tend to be bigger players that are involved in this. Bigger players means that they've got more expertise I guess, but it also means that it squashes out smaller potential contractors that might be more familiar with the local area. You said in response to councillor Reeves, that by getting one consultant to do this, they will have more local knowledge. I'm not buying that because Lincolnshire is a massive county and I, if you ask me many questions about Gainsborough, I'll struggle quite soon and probably if we ask a councillor from Gainsborough, they'll struggle with the deepings. So this local knowledge thing is, especially when on the, on the framework, it's probably not going to be a Lincolnshire supplier of these services anyway. So I'm not buying the local knowledge thing, I'm also not buying the industry expertise thing, because the visual impact of a solar PV farm, use the word carefully, but solar farm, is going to be different to the visual impact of a reservoir or pylons or pipes or offshore wind or anything else. These people, there's going to be a lot of work for these people, thanks to all the investment in Lincolnshire from the utilities and the solar panel manufacturers and so on. These people are going to be very busy. Is it sensible to have just one set of consultants that have got a team that is going to be cast all over the country? Should we not, what will inevitably happen is that they'll find people who are looking for jobs in the marketplace that will come and become their expert and we will effectively be paying a price for their subcontractor. They will subcontract out the work to a specialist either in the field or in the geographic area and that's where our money will go. So I can't support this while I know so little about the YPO framework, because for all I know, there might only just be one supplier and AAH, who you say have done such good work for all this time, we've no idea whether or not they are on that supplier list or not. So we can't go, I mean are we going back to AAH and saying how much will they charge for the same project? Sorry Chair, I've probably gone over my time.
No, absolutely fine. We'd like to come back Neil.
Yeah, I mean in terms of the issue about experience and ability to deal with this, I think that's the advantage of going to a consultant, because they tend to have more than one person, well they do have more than one person. So you're looking at, you know, a team probably with three or four different specialists and they do come with different specialisms, whether it's solar farms, overhead lines or reservoirs. So you're more likely to get that sort of mix in a consultancy, because that's how it normally sort of works. We've worked with AAH for three years and we've not had any of the issues that you've sort of identified being a problem. They've always provided the information in a timely manner, they've got a team which has got different sort of specialities for different sort of types of projects, so they're able to sort of hit the ground running in terms of whatever the project is. And I do think it does help that, you know, if a consultant has worked in Lincolnshire, I recognise that Lincolnshire is a big area, but given the number of projects that we've already had in Lincolnshire, I think by working on those, you do get to understand the landscape better than someone who's sort of parachuted in from another part of the country who may not have that amount of familiarity. I mean in terms of the...
Point of information, AAH are based in York and London, so at some stage they must have been parachuted in.
They were initially and they've now worked for three years and they've got a good understanding of the county in terms of its landscape. They're very familiar with the NSIP process because they've been doing this work for us now for two or three years, so they understand how we operate, what we need and when we need it. And they also understand how the examining authorities work and also the developers. So they have built up that experience as to be able to work very well in Lincolnshire. They will have the opportunity of being on the procurement list and that will be an opportunity for them to potentially tender as well.
I'm sorry, what you said is not consistent. You said you don't know who's on the procurement list, but AAH will have the opportunity because they are on the procurement list? So are AAH on the YPO framework and will I be massively surprised if AAH get this work?
Well I can't answer that second question, because that's obviously, they have to go through a process. AAH have seen this report, they've seen, obviously because it's in the public domain and they can see where we are looking at securing our, where we're going to for that procurement process. So there is an option for them to get themselves onto that, onto that contract or onto that framework, that's an option for them to do. So there's nothing that is not in the public domain that would compromise their ability to be part of any tender process.
I'm not buying it, but I'll...
So thank you councillor Baxter. councillor Murray.
Thank you Chair. I think it's important that we support the recommendation and that we respect the integrity of the planning process, particularly given that we are talking about applications which are of national significance, so I think we should support it.
And councillor Murray. councillor Wimhurst.
Thank you Chair. Basically, I was just going to ask a very, I was just going to say thank you to councillor Baxter, echo her sentiments there. I was going to ask a question, but I think Mr McBride did actually answer that a moment ago with what he said, so thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? No, thank you. Right, there's two actions required from the committee to consider the attached report and determine whether the committee supports the recommendations to the executive councillor for environment as set out on page eleven of the report and to agree any additional comments to be passed on to the executive councillor in relation to this item. To the first question, does the committee support the two recommendations in the report, which is set out on page eleven of the Agenda Report pack? And any additional comments that would be passed on as a statement to councillor Danny Brooks for consideration when he is making his decision? Can I ask for a proposer please? Thank you. A seconder? Thank you. All those in favour? And Q? Against? Any abstentions? Thank you. I can confirm the committee supports the proposed decisions and its statement on the proposal will be passed on to councillor Danny Brooks. I can confirm the committee supports the proposed decisions and its statement on the proposal will be passed on to councillor Danny Brooks as the executive councillor. Thank you for that one. Item six of the agenda, the work programme. At each meeting, there is an opportunity to look for, look at the committee's work programme and make suggestions for items for inclusion in the work programme. Simon Evans, Health Scrutiny Committee, over to you, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. A revised work programme was emailed to members of the committee on, on Wednesday. I won't go through each of the items, but just to say there are five items listed for the next meeting on the first of August, three for September and fourth of November currently. But I'll stop there and take questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any questions in the committee? councillor Baxter.
Thank you. So to go back to the beginning, did I hear it said that flood and water management is going to be a standing item on this agenda?
Say again, sorry.
Did I hear someone say at the beginning of the meeting that at every meeting, there will be a standing item on flood and water management?
It's all Yeah, go on, Simon.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Yes. So there is an item on flood risk management on the first of August, 26th September, 7th November, right the way through.
That's, that's very much appreciated. And luckily for you, perhaps, Chair, I'm unlikely to be here on the first of August. So you'll have a substitute. But as long as the flood and water stuff is spoken about on a regular basis and that we bring forward, did you, can I ask that the quarter four report is brought to one of these committees, even if it's the one that I'm not here at?
I would imagine so. That would be comment, yeah. Is that, I'd imagine that comment can go through to the executive to be brought forward. It shouldn't be a problem with that. Thank you. Any other questions, councillor Baxter, before we move on to the next? No. councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Chairman. Nearly £22 billion has been pledged by the Labour government to carbon capture projects last year. And this year, the Viking CCS pipeline has been granted development consent by the Secretary of State for Energy Security and Net Stupid Zero. Can we review the environmental impacts of this technology beneath our feet? And if this does go ahead, make sure that occurrences such as ruptured carbon pipeline in Mississippi, which hospitalised 49 people and pushed the oxygen out of the air, does not happen in Lincolnshire. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I, I've taken note of that and perhaps we can discuss with officers and yourself, Chairman, about possibility of scheduling that at a forthcoming meeting. Thank you.
councillor Carrington.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Two questions, if I, if I may. One is a general one and one is specific to the August agenda. Just starting with the general one and going back to the point about flood and water management, which, which exercises a lot of people. We've been given an assurance that this committee will try and do the job fully that F and W did. Could we therefore not simply introduce into the work programme of this committee en bloc all the elements that were in the work programme going forward from flood and water management? I'll pause after that question and come back to my second, if I may, Chairman.
Looking through the work programme, councillor Carrington, you'll see at the end, there is a list of those items which would have been presented to flood risk and water management in this session if we'd been carrying on with such a committee. So you'll see on page, I don't know, because I've not got exactly the same report as everybody else. I haven't got Wednesdays yet. But in, under item three, items to be programmed, you will note there's a number of flood risk and water management items on that.
Thank you, Chairman. We'll, we'll see how the work programme evolves and make that comparison. Can I ask a specific question about August, which looks like a very interesting agenda? Item one and item two both concern biodiversity net gain with reports from Chris Miller and Neil McBride. Behind both of those things, I just wonder if there's an opportunity to explore the relationship between biodiversity net gain and the nature recovery, the Greater Lincolnshire Nature Recovery Strategy. From a planning point of view, biodiversity net gain is meant to feed into that in practical terms at the level of local planning authorities, and we have seven in, in Lincolnshire. That's not really happening. That connection isn't really happening yet. So I was just wondering when they give their reports, whether Chris and Neil, or both or individually, might just address that overarching issue and how this stuff is going to be brought together. Because biodiversity net gain is really, really complicated to implement. It's causing a lot of issues for developers, a lot of issues for local planning authorities, and I'm sure a lot of issues for, for us as a planning authority. But that overarching thing of, of the relationship with, with nature recovery is something which is there, but has kind of fallen silent. And I just wonder if this will be an opportunity for the committee to explore it through those reports. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Carrington. Well, fortunately, we do have the heads here, so hopefully they will be able to enlighten you of how much detail they're already planning on putting in and maybe additional based on your comments.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, councillor Carrington. Absolutely. So as part of the, my part of the report rather than Neil's, that'll be picked up about that relationship with the formation of the local nature recovery strategy. That strategy is not yet published, so there isn't anything formal that the districts will be using at this point in time. We're still working on that with our colleagues at Natural England and the Greater Lincoln and Aintree Partnership. But that will be coming back to this committee for pre-decision scrutiny later on in this session.
That satisfies you, councillor Carrington. Thank you very much. councillor Martin.
Thank you, Chair. As we've just heard a reference to Net Stupid Zero from my colleague over here. Could we have some guidance as to what the administration proposed to do with the Green Master Plan? Because I see it's on the list as something we're going to be discussing. But obviously, it's extremely relevant. And obviously, if you're going to be working hard on this and changing it, that would reflect on where we place it within the work programme. So it'd be good to have some kind of steer as to whether you're going to do drastic changes to this or it's just an item for noting. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. As you can see, it is a new developed committee and obviously with an altered workload. So I'm sure, Chris, I'd like to hand it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah. So for those councillors not aware, the Green Master Plan is actually the Lincolnshire County Council's environment policy. And it covers a wide range of environmental topics, which sit variously under, under the head of service you see before you today. And, and we work within that Green Master Plan framework. It is due for revision in this financial year. However, we, to do so ahead of the corporate plan, the new corporate plan being published wouldn't be the right way of doing it. So once the corporate plan, I believe it's the December full council, I believe it's going to. Forgive me if I've got that a bit wrong, but once that is published, then we can then start the revisions to the environment policy. We're already ongoing with that work, but obviously it will depend very much on how the corporate plan lays out.
Okay. Any more questions? No, thank you very much. Right, the action required to review the committee's forward work programme is set out in the report. And to note, the committee's terms of reference is set out in the Penexb of the report. Do I have a proposer to note report? Thank you. A seconder? Thank you. All those in favour? That's carried, thank you. All right, that concludes, thank you very much, everybody, officers, members of the public. That concludes the business and the formal meeting. We shall now take a short, a five-minute comfort break. And I wish to see you shortly. Thank you.